The mayor.
James Nocita, Commissioner.
Commissioner West, Commissioner.
Would you please stand and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move into citizen comment, I just want to let you know that there are a couple of changes if you didn't read the agenda closely this evening. And one is that the appeal for the Clackamas County Children's Center land use application has been withdrawn, so we will make a motion on that, but the public hearing is canceled. Then secondly, the annexation, that is the second item under public hearings, is to be continued to our next city commission meeting, but if you've come to testify on that, we will take public testimony to continue to add to the record. So other than that, the, well, I guess the other one would be that the library facility proposal is not yet complete, but if you've also come to testify on library issues, you may do that at that time as well. So Commissioner West?
Would you be interested, or would we be interested in moving the library discussion up first if anybody's here to talk about it?
There is not much ahead of it, so it'll be pretty close to the top. Okay, next, let's move in, we move into citizen comment, and I see that we have two who've signed up to speak. If you have, we'd like you to fill out a card and hand it to Kelly, who is our city recorder pro tem this evening, and then when you come to the microphone, we ask that you state your name and the city in which you live, then speak to us for up to three minutes, and our little monitor here will tell you when your time is coming to a close. So with that, Stephen Haberbeek, followed by Tanya Hunt.
My name is Steve Van Haberbeek, I'm a resident of Oregon City, of the Park Place neighborhood. I'm here just on my own behalf tonight. I would like to talk a little about the Holcombe Boulevard sidewalk improvements, and very happy to see that they're finally coming to a close.
That's on the agenda this evening, isn't it?
Quite. That's, that's talking about transfer-
Certain section, okay.
All I'm worried about is, or talking about is the sidewalk that has been finally put in.
Yes, please continue.
After three or four years of discussion and plans, and then we get the sidewalk, which was not at all like what we had designed and gone through sessions and were told what was going to be. So it was not at all what we had expected to find. We were looking at the meandering path, bioswales, and what we got was sidewalk and curb, and it looks just like the rest of Oregon City. Got no problem with joining the 20th century anyway, but we'd like to know what happened to the designs that we thought we were going to be getting? Why were we not getting? The process that we had was to present us with what we were going to have, but it wasn't at all like what we got. The second issue was, why did it take six months to complete? This doesn't bode well for the 213 Washington Boulevard overpass that is told that, yes, they can move that in in one weekend. If it takes six months to build a sidewalk, we'll see what happens. In order to build trust with the citizens, the city should not be showing us a proposed building plan and then switch to something completely different. And what does this indicate about the Park Place Concept Plan area that we've been designing and going through all of this for years and saying, here's what we're going to build? And yet, when it comes to the shovel, what are we actually going to get? I would love to see the concept plan that we have designed and talked about actually be developed. I think it would be a wonderful thing for Oregon City and for our neighborhood. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. May I ask our city manager that you develop a response for-
Sure, we can do that.
-subsequent meeting? Thank you. Next, Tanya Hunt, followed by Paul Edgar.
Welcome. Good evening. My name is Tanya Hunt, and I serve as Executive Director of the Children's Center in Oregon City. I live in unincorporated Clackamas County. I'm here today to simply recognize some of the leaders in Clackamas, or in Oregon City, that have been so helpful to the Children's Center in the last couple of weeks, and I wanted to publicly thank them for their efforts. I wanted to particularly recognize your Community Development Director, Tony Conkle, for his excellent work, and Laura Butler for her help in the Children's Center's process of our land use application. It was certainly a new experience for us, and something we had to learn our way through, and they were very helpful and approachable, and their advice was certainly appreciated. And then, in our interactions with some local community members near the Children's Center's proposed building project, we had some concerns raised that really were significant and caused them to initially put in some appeals. I wanted to let you know how those were resolved, and it was really through the work of many people in this community, mostly through the leadership of Providence Health and Services in our community that stepped forward to meet with these neighbors and address any kind of pending issues that they had between them, establish a good working relationship so that they can move forward. And that meeting was primarily brought to be through the work of William Gifford, and I wanted to publicly recognize William for his exceptional leadership as a community activist. I think in the best sense of the word, William is a selfless leader who stepped forward, saw a problem in his local community, and stepped forward to bring the right people together and resolve that problem in a way that was really a winning solution for everybody. So I wanted to just take this chance tonight to thank William for his great work, and I know you know him well, but it was one of the chances I've seen William in, in action, and it made a huge difference to the Children's Center and our work with abused kids as we expand and grow. So thank you to all of you and to the community members who made this possible. Thank you.
It appears to be date night at the Hunt family. We sadly were joined by Speaker of the House, Dave Hunt. You wish to tell us the results of the special session?
Madam Mayor and Council, thank you. My name's Paul Edgar, I'm from Oregon City. I'm the Land Use Chair of the Kanema Neighborhood Association. This past couple of weeks, I had the opportunity to sit through a trial. A trial that was, where Oregon City was a plaintiff. Fifteen thousand gallons of sewage filled up a house at 713 Fourth Avenue in Kanema. The trial went on, and without getting into all of the details, it was, the end result was a very sad day for Oregon City. Very sad day for me, very sad day for Kanema. Why was it sad? Well, a couple things. One, there was the realization that right up front, everyone knew that the city had a blockage in the sewage pipe, and they knew it in advance. Half of the pipe that goes below this house was blocked by a protruding lateral connection. They saw it during a video examination. Why is it so sad? Is because when they knew in advance they had significant liability, steps were not taken to honestly settle. This neighbor of ours, this Kanema resident, expended $116,000 in legal and miscellaneous expenses to try to take this thing through court. He won, he got $138,000. His net to resolve this house that is virtually a total loss is virtually nothing. He, the evaluations that were given to him were so unbelievable and pathetic, it was just, you could cry. It was a sad day. So now what we see is a house and a litigation that costs the city not only $138,000, but attorney's fees and legal fees, and a nick on insurance and everything else that the city does, but it's a statement of anti-citizens. It's a statement against thinking about the citizens first. Thinking about my neighborhood first, protracting this out to a point where the end citizen is taking a bankruptcy. Is this what, how we treat citizens in Oregon City? But that's exactly what's happened. That's exactly the posture that was taken by the leadership of this city, that caused it to happen, and took no steps to bring it to a resolution in a meaningful and honest way, when we knew right up front that in fact we had this liability. So I would only hope that you guys realize, I know another house right now is going through the same thing.
Paul, please come to conclusion.
These people are also taking bankruptcy on another houses right now. So I'm getting more information on that, I'll bring it to you, but it's, it's a serious problem. Thank you.
As usual, Paul, you've gotten some of your facts incorrect, and we have our hands often tied by legal processes. Is there anything our attorney would like to comment on, to set the record straight here at all?
I, I know that the commission is aware of this, and I guess the, the one thing I would say as we go through the budgeting process is that the, you know, the sewer line at issue did, did work for many decades without, without issues. There, you know, Oregon City is an old city, they have, we have water lines and sewer lines that we'd like to be able to maintain better than we have, and that's part of the budgeting issues that, that this commission is going to have to do. We would love to provide perfect sewers and perfect water. Reality of the funds that we have, you know, we've got to do the best we can.
There might be a point in the future where we probably could share some of the things that occurred prior to the trial and so forth, and we're just not in a position to do that.
That concludes citizen comment. So moving on to the adoption of the agenda, is there anything that needs to be rearranged this evening, or pulled off of the consent agenda for separate consideration? Seeing none, we'll take the agenda in the order in which it is listed. First item on the agenda is the appeal of Clackamas County Children's Center land use application. Because of the withdrawal of the appeal, the public hearing is canceled. Do we need to make a motion to take this off the agenda? Mr. Conkle?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
No, okay. It's just here as an information item, then?
It was, it was orig, the, the withdrawals were provided after the commission reports were prepared and published.
Okay, thank you, I didn't realize that. All right, next is AN 902, which is an annexation of properly, of, oops, we just moved it up. The annexation of 53 acres in the city of Oregon City, in the Park Place area within urban growth boundary, and in the boundaries of Park Place Concept Plan. We, with the request of staff, wish to continue this to February 17th. However, if anyone has come to talk to us this evening, I will open the public hearing and we will take your testimony. Commissioner Nocita.
Madam Mayor, I have a question about procedure on this, this item.
Yes.
The Planning Commission has not finished with this. I'm, I'm totally in the dark as to why this is on our agenda tonight.
It was expected that they would be finished. I believe that's the reason.
When we do the noticing, we notice both hearings on the same notice, so that folks are aware of both the Planning Commission and City Commission as opportunities to speak. So the Planning Commission, there was some additional information provided, they requested staff to take that information back and prepare a memo in response to it, which caused the next Planning Commission hearing to be next Monday after this hearing, was previously scheduled.
So essentially, there would be nothing preventing anybody from giving, having their full opportunity to speak as we continue this hearing tonight to the next city commission meeting?
Yep.
Anyone that comes to hear may speak, and of course, at the meeting in which these are, are heard, we will always take public testimony. Answer your concern?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Then we need a motion for continuance, please.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nocita, to continue this item to February 17th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Moving down the agenda then. Next under General Business, Library Facility Proposal, called our library director. If you wish to.
What do you want me to report on this?
What are we going to report on tonight?
Okay, let me take that. We, we are still working on library proposals. Of course, the big topic of the day is finding a site for the library. If, if, has anyone come here to talk about that with us this evening? We do not have information to present tonight.
We'd, we'd put that on your agenda pending your discussion in executive session, and since that is unfinished, really it would be inappropriate this time.
We have a continuance of our executive session at the close of this meeting, which, so we don't have information available. Karen, did you wish to speak?
We'll be careful, we'll be careful not to nod our heads or shake them as you say anything.
Just call me Justice Alioto. Madam Mayor and Commissioner, this will be a very generic statement, but-
Your name is?
My name's Karen Mori, I live in unincorporated Clackamas County. I've had the opportunity to research a great deal of the history of the Oregon City Library. One of the things that I found was that in 1950, the librarian declared the Carnegie as an space that was no longer large enough for the library.
Where was that?
1950. In April of 1995, the library finally burst the seams at the Carnegie and was allowed to move into a quote-unquote temporary space. A bit of the humor about Oregon City is our means of defining temporary. It appears to be a 15 to 20-year period. In the course of those 15 years in being in a rented space, there have been multiple panels, a great deal of citizen input, looking at alternative sites for the library. None of those unfortunately have resulted in a move for the library. Those studies however have designated some existing buildings, and one of those existing buildings is going to be considered by this commission later this evening. Given the success of City Hall, and having learned how much less it is per square foot to rehabilitate an existing building than it is to build from the ground up, I think that building and assist, buying an existing building and rehabilitating it into the library is a marvelous idea. A library is a wonderful fit in a neighborhood, and I think it's a perfect amenity. I've had a lot of citizen input because people know that I'm interested in the library, that I'm on the, currently on the library board. There does seem to be a uniform desire to locate the library in a larger facility that is a community asset. And given the fact that the executive session's been set to the end of the meeting, that is the end of my statement.
Commissioner Neely?
The, the impression would have been left that nothing happened between 1915 and 1995, which would not, is not true. There were inappropriate architectural changes that were taken to permit the expansion of the stacks, and there were changes that were made also to permit the basement to be used in, in certain areas of the basement that couldn't be used before. So actually, the, the area of the library was actually increased, the functional area of the library was actually increased in the 1960s. So, so the, so the director of the library in 1995 led me to leave at least, as my source of information.
Well before 1995, unfortunately, we had outgrown the existing space, and I, as nicely as possible, there were attempts to pass a bond to build a new library. That's quite a hurdle, to actually buy ground and build a new building. So again, with the success of City Hall, I think that an existing building rehabilitated at a lower cost per square foot is to the advantage of the city.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll move on then to our second item of general business, which is Resolution 10-01, Accepting Jurisdictional Transfer of Holcombe Boulevard from Clackamas County. Nancy Crusher?
Good evening, Mayor Norris and Commissioners. As we approach the completion of the Holcombe Boulevard sidewalk improvements, Phase One, we are now in a position to comply with the intergovernmental agreement we entered into with Clackamas County several months ago, and that is that they would transfer jurisdiction to us. So what's before you tonight is simply the formality of us accepting the jurisdiction of Holcombe Boulevard and acknowledging that they split the cost of the improvements with us, and that is their contribution towards the jurisdictional transfer. And it amounts to about $280,000.
Questions from the commission? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution 10-1, Accepting Jurisdictional Transfer of Holcombe Boulevard from Clackamas County.
Second with a couple comments, questions.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West, and now a discussion. Commissioner West?
So Nancy, is it being transferred because we split the repairs, or once the repairs are made, now that it's in good enough sh, standing that we take it over, or why?
Well, the county has, has been interested in transferring Holcombe Boulevard to us for some time. In fact, they're, they're interested in transferring several of their roadways to us as well, but they have a stumbling block, that being that they lack cash to pay for the conditions in our urban growth management agreement with them. It indicates that for them to transfer jurisdiction, they need to, for a local street, pay for a two-inch overlay, and for anything above a collector, we would negotiate a price. Holcombe Boulevard is a minor arterial, and in the interest of us trying to put together enough money to do Phase One sidewalk improvements, we talked to them and said, how about, you know, we go in on this together, and then as a, to make it acceptable to them, they would split the cost of the project with us if we would take jurisdiction.
Okay, got it. And so the other roads that are county roads within the city, because it's so, I thought it was so unusual to have county roads within the city, or what, Beaver Creek and Summer Leland and-
Yeah, there's a, there's a-
What else is?
Number of remnant ones, parts of Central Point Road, well, the steep part of South End Road, that's closer to the river, which I don't think we particularly want jurisdiction of that. And then, there's also a couple of-
Leland too?
Local, parts of Leland Road, yeah, Beaver Creek Road, parts of Maple Lane.
I, I think last summer, were they working on Beaver Creek Road there, and everyone was calling and asking why the city was doing this, and it was the county, county's road, right?
Uh, south part of Beaver Creek Road, or?
Or to the campus.
Yeah, that would be the county's jurisdiction, south of Maple Lane.
It's just kind of confusing to think that there's county roads within the city.
Yeah, and, and is, there's a-
It's a road.
There's an argument to-
That wasn't so-
There's an argument to be made that the city take over a number of those because they are in the city, and, you know, it's our obligation, we would like to have the obligation of maintaining them, but if they're not in very good condition, we're not even in a position with our pavement management utility to do a good job of getting them paved. And we do have an urban growth agreement with the county that states for us to take jurisdiction, they need to bring the road surface up to a certain standard, and we've tried to be true to that, and it's difficult when they don't, they lack the funds to make the transfer.
Thank you for the explanation.
Commissioner Nocita?
Quick question for Ms. Quesshauer. Is there any relationship between this agenda item and the topic of the jurisdictional transfer, and the issue that Mr. Van Haberbeek raised?
I don't believe so. I think I will have to get out the Holcombe Boulevard plan, and Mr. Haberbeek and I can go over it, so I can show him the sections that we've completed and what was in the plan, but that is really a separate issue from the construction, the intergovernmental agreement and this road transfer.
Further comments? All right, the vote, please. Kelly.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Next, as the hot topic of the day is hiring our new city manager, and I'll turn to our, where is, our HR director, there. Sorry, I couldn't find you, because it's necessary this evening that we establish the, that we adopt standards, criteria, and policy directives as we proceed with the hiring process. Mr. Leffler?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, based on our, our last meeting, January 20th, city attorney, Mr. Kabaisman, appraised myself and the commission that for, the commission to review applicants and discuss applicants in executive, for the city manager position in executive session, it was required under ORS 1926607, that the commission, first off, open up for public comment, and then vote for approval of the criteria, standards, criteria, and policy directives. So at this opportunity, I bring forward the standards, draft standards, criteria, and policy directives for your approval and for public comment.
These are essentially the same as have been posted on our website.
These are, these are in fact the, the ideal profile for the city manager that was approved prior to, to the recruitment going into effect, but we're at the stage now where we've received applicants, and we would like to be able to discuss those in executive session with the, with the entire commission, and in order to do so, we need this passed.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt these, please?
Madam Mayor, I would ask that it be open for public comment before the-
Yes, yep, exactly.
I'm going to have a question.
Do you want to ask before public comment? Sure. I don't see why.
So have we determined the whole, the entire process of when we're, we're going to have a public open house, and how staff, or if they'll have a chance to-
We wait till after we finish this piece, and then we'll go into the process.
Okay.
This is about the adopting of the standards first. Is there anyone who has come to speak about this item? Not then may I have a motion for adoption? Oh, sorry, please come forward. And you warned me.
Yeah. Excuse me.
They don't call the hot seat for nothing.
Excuse the drama. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City, and I want to speak tonight as the, as the Secretary of the CIC, and I sent out a letter to the commission and a few other folks, asking for the possibility of the CIC to have an opportunity to have a separate presentation by three finalists, and I don't know if this is an appropriate-
No, it's a process question, if that, so that probably gets into what Commissioner West, this, this is the adoption of the policies-
Right, right, and I, since she was mentioning that, I thought if that was all going to be done at the same time-
You're going to get-
Want to just stay, stay there for a sec? Then you, we could-
Okay, but just for a sec. Because my clock is running.
They'll let your clock run a little bit. We'll reset your clock. Zip and clean your clock. Okay. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to us on the policy, standards, and criteria issues? If not, then may I have a motion for adoption, please?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Nocita. Don't see any comments, so Kelly, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Now, Commissioner West, why don't you make your procedural comments and have a response, and then we'll get into Mr. Gifford's question.
I was trying to beat Mr. Gifford to the punch there on the process, because I did see his email asking, from some of our citizen involvement committees, of how, you know, where they could have, provide some input, or at least get to preview or review the candidates. So that and staff, I'm concerned. So I don't know if the committees are going to be at the same time as a public open house, or what we're going to do.
Mr. Leffler?
Really, the, the next step of the process is to meet in executive session, however, we can work through some-
we're a little bit, a little bit behind schedule, about a week or so behind my original schedule. But I hope to schedule interviews the first week of March, possibly, depending on the Commission's schedule, possibly the, towards the end of the last week of February. And then based on those interviews, also go through with the Commission as how they want to invite the public in for reception and for meeting, whether it's going to be all seven of the candidates or the final three. We haven't really, we haven't had that opportunity to discuss those specifics. So that's something that we need to do and propose we do that, we can do that via email or we can do it in an executive session.
I think until that point, it would be very, very appropriate to take public input, so you're on.
May then, please. It was the intent of the CIC at our meeting Monday night that they have an opportunity to meet with candidates, the final candidates, and I'm thinking it would only be three, separate from the traditional meet and greet strawberry, you know, informal approach that will be offered to the public, just because we would like the candidates to see the representatives of the neighborhood associations sort of in their, in a more official perspective, and then just as a friendly howdy.
Good for that. Okay, Commissioner Nocita?
I just had a point of process as well. Weeks ago, I remember requesting an executive session the same night on the labor negotiations with the Police Department. Since we're going into executive session on the library, is it possible for us to go into executive session on this as well? I'm interested in doing that because there's a lot of work to be done. You know, I'd like to get going on what we need to do right away. And we now do that.
The agenda can be expanded, and we did notice for executive session, so yeah, we can go.
Okay, good.
I guess my concern in terms of process could probably be discussed in the executive session as well, so you'll notice I'm next on the agenda, so based on that...
I don't have you there. There you are, Commissioner Neely.
Well, what I was going to say is, I've already said, so...
And you're on here?
You already heard.
Technology. Okay, thank you. Any other comments on process? All right, then we'll go on. Yes.
You know, as we're making our way through this, the executive session exemption, as you know, you can't go to executive session on an item unless there is an exemption for it. And I'm looking for the specific language that talks about what executive session gets you to, and it is to consider the employment of a public officer employee. And so when you start getting into process of how you go about doing that, you know, there's sort of a spectrum of how far you go. But if it's, you know, we're going to have them meet with, each of the candidates meet with the citizen involvement committee, with the planning commission, whoever it may be, you're starting to, you're more at the process end than really talking about the qualifications and should we hire candidate A as opposed to candidate B, which is really the main purpose of the executive session.
Commissioner Nocita?
I'm finding talking about some of these process issues now, the things I want to raise in an executive session, however, I think are kind of inextricably linked with the candidates themselves. So I'm kind of thinking that it would be better to do it there.
And like I said, there's a spectrum. There's certain things that are clearly, you know, beyond executive session, there's ones that are clearly within, and so without hearing the substance.
If I could just outline the process that we followed two times prior, which I thought was really a pretty good one and well-accepted by the community, is that when the candidates came to town, we had them rotate through the departments of the city so that they were able to see how the city worked and have staff have the ability to meet them. After that, then we convened a, it was actually a panel of citizens that were able to ask questions of them, and so have kind of a pretty formal dialogue. And then I believe we concluded with an informal social gathering, so that we had an opportunity for informal and formal discussions. And then the City Council, City Commission got our opportunity, of course, to have a five-on-one session with each of the candidates too as we moved through the rotation. So other comments and questions or ideas that you might have for process? Jim, Commissioner Nocita?
I want to open up this process as much as legally possible to the public. I was intrigued by what Mr. Leffler just mentioned about having all seven candidates meet the public. That had not crossed my mind until you just mentioned it, so I'm wondering if you have any background and whether that's common, has it been done in the past? Is it something that would be logistic? Because I assume they'd come here to interview. They're all coming here to interview, so can't they all meet the public at the same time since they're going to be in town anyway?
I'll give you the Mr. Gabisman answer. It depends. It depends on...
I'm sure the Mr. Sullivan act...
The main issue is cost. If we develop the process to go lockstep that quickly where we go, you know, if, and I guess it depends also on the executive session, are we going to, in fact, interview all seven candidates? Or do we, you know, are we taking a look again and whittling down the number to three or something? So that's something else to consider. If we're going to interview all seven, and they're here to interview and then available to meet and greet with the public, that's a possibility. But that is somewhat a little bit more difficult logistically to arrange for seven rather than three.
Neely?
I think we had a lot of candidates for the library director's position. We did have a meeting where members of the public, friends of the library, I think the library board members even met them separately, as I recall, maybe not. They didn't, okay. In any case, I thought it worked very well. I talked to as many people there as I could to find out what their impressions were. I think there's a real benefit to it. This is a little bit different than having specific bodies meet individually, you know, with them. But in terms of a general invitation to the CIC, to the Library Advisory Committee and so forth, to meet the candidates, I think it'd be, excuse me, we're not talking about the library position. Let me go back to it. But to invite perhaps some of our advisory boards, the CIC and so forth, to meet the candidates, I think would be great.
Could someone refresh my memory? How many, how many, how many library director candidates did come here and meet with the public?
Five.
There were five people that actually met the public, okay?
I think seven is logistically difficult to, we'd have to bring them in town for several days, and I think that that's, I think that sounds like finalists rather than... So we'll talk about that in executive session, I think. But definitely, our boards and advisory committees, we certainly value their opinion. And then we also developed previously a feedback system, so that they could give feedback to us on cards, they could give feedback to us on email, so that we were able to have that information that the public wished to provide after meeting the candidates. Any other process questions, comments, or concerns? All right, let's move then into the consent agenda. May I have a motion for adoption of the consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I guess...
You're out of order. You're out of order.
I missed a decision to poll, and I'm going to request a poll.
Which one?
And that's on A B.
We'll pull the minutes of January 20th. May I have a motion then for adoption of Items A, C, and T on the consent agenda?
Move of approval.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Nocita on the consent agenda. Kelly, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Now, the minutes of January 20th, Commissioner Neely?
Yes, on page, page two of the minutes. Okay. The, my comments before Section A, Commissioner Neely said some statements made in the minutes of the Transportation Advisory Committee were not consistent with the position of some of the members of the committee. That's, it's confusing. I know I said quite a bit, what I was doing was actually reading Advisory Committee minutes into the, into the record. And I don't want the minutes read into this. I just want to simplify it because I don't, I think it missed the overall point. I would say that based, Commissioner Neely, based on the reading of the Transportation Advisory Committee, stated that any time they were moving from a more conservative traffic control device, and simplify that. And just, just say, Commissioner Neely, based on the reading of the minutes from the Transportation Advisory Committee, said that any time.
Consistent with a staff review of the transcript, we could adopt that.
Okay.
And we have a motion for adoption of the minutes of January 20th.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nocita.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Well, if it is consistent with what the tape said, because that is what I recall you saying.
No, that's not what I said. I read into, I read into, I read in the minutes of the Advisory Committee, and there was an attempt, I think, to abbreviate the minutes.
Okay, well...
I mean, to say, to say the committee meetings were not consistent with the position of some of the members of the committee, that doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. And it's not what I said. I read, I read, I read a whole segment of the minutes into the record, and I was attempting to summarize that. It's a confusing statement, and I don't want anybody to think I make more confusing statements than I already do.
Okay. As long as that review of the tapes agrees with you, that's fine. Any other comments? Kelly, the vote, please.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Next, moving into communications, first we begin with Mr. Patterson, our city manager.
Mayor, I'll have one out of this evening. I'm going to have Ms. Crusher report to you, give you an update on the bicycle lanes on Warner Milley.
Yes, I think, I think probably a month or two ago now, we reported to the, I reported to the City Commission that we were going to study Warner Milley Road in the area of our construction project between Molala and Beaver Creek Road to determine whether or not it would be appropriate to put bike lanes on Warner Milley Road. And what would be required is to eliminate the center turn lane on that stretch of roadway to allow for bike lanes. And so we, the traffic engineer who's working on the project is DKS and Associates, we asked them to study that segment of roadway to determine what would be the pros and cons of bike lanes versus having a center turn lane. And they have come back with their report, and their recommendation is that bike lanes would work, and it would be okay to remove the center turn lane. And so what we would, what staff would like to do at this point is take this report to the Transportation Advisory Committee. In the meantime, DKS is meeting with the stakeholders who have properties along that stretch of Warner Milley Road to talk to them about it, and so they understand what's being discussed, and to get their input, and then go to the Transportation Advisory Committee, and then after completion of those meetings, come to the City Commission and give you an update, and provide a recommendation and see where we're at at that point. But I wanted to give you an update on that because we did get the results of the traffic study, and we will be talking to folks out there, and if you receive phone calls or comments, you'll know what's going on.
Sounds like a good process. Okay? Okay.
It seems a pity that we'd have a trade-off for a center lane to bike lane.
Space for both. Where the issue lies?
You know, surprisingly, if you happen to be driving downtown now, Warner Milley is a minor arterial, but so are Line Avenue, Leland, South End Road. South End Road has some center turn lanes, but there are, quite a lot of our minor arterials are two lanes, and some have no bike lanes either. But, so it's not, it's not as unusual as you would think. And we, you know, eventually we'll get you a copy of this report, and it describes what situations warrant a center turn lane, and it also discusses the advantages of providing access to bikes on Warner Milley rate. I don't remember the exact number, but surprisingly, there were hundreds of bicyclists using Warner Milley every day, and there are no bike lanes. So there's some interesting information in this, and we'll make sure you have all the background as time goes on.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, moving on then to, I wish to appoint this evening Steve Johnson to the Clockmas Katalax Success Board. Actually, it's a reappointment for the term beginning now to December 31st, 2012. And are there reports from Commissioners?
Your Commissioners?
Commissioner Neely?
Couple things. You've appointed three members to go through the, to go through the task force, I should say, go forward for the consultants to develop and work with a task force for the end of the, for the site of the, of the Trail Interpretive Center. We've...
Two of you, not three?
Well, excuse me, Lloyd Purry also was there, and two Commissioners, that's right. Commissioner Smith and myself. We have gone through that process, we've shortlisted three or four. We found in general with the applicants that they were directing their attention specifically at the interpretive center itself, and many of them seem to be focusing on a process that would look at somehow perhaps redoing the interpretive center. And I think we may have had a broader vision of the best use of the properties there. So we are, in fact, going to have a, an interview with those individuals. Ms. Bankett has gone ahead and scheduled that interview on Friday, and we have sent some specific questions to them to make sure that it's clear that we're looking at a broader input than just looking at the interpretive value of the site, which is important, but it may not be the only thing. And I wanted to indicate that that's a decision that we made. The other thing, it doesn't have to do with the report, but one of the citizens of Oregon City took me out and pointed out we already had graffiti on our, on our building.
Yep, I saw that.
And I do not know we have a graffiti ordinance in terms of how we deal with graffiti, and I don't know that's in our changes in code that we're going to be looking at. But a citizen pointed out to me, he works, he works for Parks in Portland, and he pointed out to me that this is an advertisement of the artist's work, and the longer it's there, the more pride they take in the work. In fact, you get rid of that within a 24-hour period, you're going to reduce the likelihood of graffiti continually coming into the city. We haven't had a major problem with it, but we have had some, and I guess just because it was right there on City Hall concerned me. And maybe we need to look at a graffiti ordinance that deals with the need for the property owner to cover up the graffiti within a limited period of time, so this doesn't become a growing problem.
As I recall from a previous chief, your predecessor is that we do have an existing policy that the Police Department tries to get that noticed and removed within 24 hours. Is it policy and practice?
I don't think the city succeeded.
No, I'm not sure why that's there. Mr. Archer? Who has responsibilities for this?
I just wanted to let the Commission know and... I, I just wanted to let the commission know on, on what you're talking about, Commissioner Neely, the, we did, we did take care of that on this building. There was a longer than we desired period of time, because we, as you know, we were finishing the contract on this building. We didn't have the color match yet, and we, so we were waiting and waiting in the contractor, we, anyway, I, that was not our normal practice. We would normally take care of that more quickly, and then we have gotten some reports recently of some graffiti that's popping up unfortunately on the promenade. I've instructed, or directed our maintenance crew to go out and take care of that immediately, and they were to do that as quickly as they can do. So I would just tell you that from my department, and there are other departments, maybe Public Works, and, you know, some others that might have different, but our operating practice, as soon as it's reported to us, we do attempt to get out fairly quickly and take care of it. As you know, unfortunately, in the parks business, we get an awful lot of graffiti, and that is an issue for us as far as, you know, resources and time. The amount of time that's diverted, and the amount of resources that are diverted in our budget to take care of this is, is really becoming quite impactful. But I know that's not exactly what you're talking about, but I did want to let you know that's, that's what our practice is on, on the parks facility side of things, that we do, normally we would have taken care of this building much more quickly, but we've done that now, and if it pops up again, it'll be gone.
Let me just ask the chief, in terms of, when these complaints come on, in terms of private property, how do we respond to it?
We respond to it as a, as a criminal mischief, as a crime. And so that means we send an officer out there, the officer will look at it. A lot of times, if it's gang-related, they'll have it analyzed, see whether or not we can find out what gang affiliated it might be. We also talk to the neighbors and try to find out whether or not there just might be criminal mischief. Sometimes it's just juveniles with no gang affiliation who are doing these types of things, and it typically is a, is a juvenile-related crime. Unfortunately, most of these things do occur at night, under, under the cover of darkness with no witnesses, so a lot of times finding out who did it, unless we have a lead or a witness, is, is quite hard to do.
My question actually was more specific to the property owner's obligation to get the graffiti removed.
You know, I, I don't know that answer off the top of my head. I, I'll, I can review the, the code.
I was saying in terms of code, what problems there might be to actually implement such a code, but.
As far as I know, we don't have a specific code that deals with that. It could be dealt with under the nuisance. I know a number of cities have adopted that requirement, that either the property owner removes it within a certain period of time, or the city will come and remove it, bill the property owner for the costs of removal. You run into some enforcement issues, you know, if you're going to take it on, you, you need to be consistent.
Just advertisement for those people who do the graffiti, and increases the likelihood it's going to become a more problem.
Those programs have been very effective.
I would request that, if, if the commission agrees with me, to actually have us look at some of those.
If you're interested in pursuing that.
I brought this, can I, can I talk a little bit more than this? I brought this up because of Main Street downtown, they have a lot of graffiti issues. So I'd be willing to talk about it. I'm unclear at this point, if a business or a residence has been tagged with graffiti, do they call the police chief? Do they call the Parks Department? Do they call code enforcement? Or are they just lucky?
Yes, they do.
Or, or are we lucky to get it fixed? Because there is no codes, really, and it's just the kindness of, the efficiency of our parks to take care of it.
We do not have a graffiti ordinance at the present time, other than just policy. So that's one, if you'd like, we can look at developing, again, one of the things, particularly on private property, that will be requiring them to take action, and there is a cost associated with that, so it's something you want.
Look at that, and then what other communities do, what we, I think we might be.
Normally, I think, as, as was reported, the best approach to that is try to remove that in a short period of time, because it does discourage it.
I think that city staffs have been terrific doing that through the years, because we've had various.
It's part of that, I mean, one of the things that we'll spend a little bit of time talking about next week, as you look at your goals again, is budget and these maintenance issues, because that's one of the topics we probably need to think a little bit more about. Let me also mention for any would-be artists looking at this building again, is they should practice or smile, because we do have cameras on the external portion now, so we will be looking at them.
If you didn't hear, cameras exist. Okay? Commissioner Nocita?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I'll talk about three items tonight. First, on Monday, I attended the CIC meeting, and I thought it was a very productive and heartfelt discussion among CIC members about the role of the, the body itself. And one of the topics that I want to carry forward as, which I mentioned during the meeting, was the CIC's role, and one of the reasons the CIC was established was to implement goal one of the state land use, state land use goals. And I am not, and was not clear on just the degree to which the CIC is charged with commenting on and reviewing major land use decisions. And, I mean, one of them's on the agenda tonight. I just, just out of curiosity, Mr. Compliment, Mr. Grandlaw, I guess, could answer this too. This park place annexation, is it, is it, is it understood within the community development department that a question like this should be reviewed by the CIC? I mean, it is a land use issue, annexations are land use issues. And I'm just wondering, as, in our processes, is we automatically, you know, refer something like this to the CIC?
Yes, we do. We forward the application of the CIC as well as the affected neighborhood association for comment.
Okay. Was that also the case with the, the Public Works Master Plan?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Okay, well, that's good, that's good to hear, because I wasn't, you know, not totally familiar with, with the processes. There is, was some discussion also about referring other major city questions to the CIC, urban renewal questions, for example, came up. So over the next couple of weeks and months, I'll be, you know, keeping my ear to the ground and talking to the folks affiliated with the CIC on, just kind of getting a bead on, on what exactly we do make referrals to the CIC on. Second item I'd like to talk about, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for their nice party this weekend, the annual dinner I attended, the first one I had attended, and had a pleasant surprise at the beginning, when I walked in with my new haircut, and my suit and my tie, and some of the leading ladies of Oregon City, who I guess are unused to a clean-cut presentation on my part, gave a gasp of, I think of approval. And I just want to say that if that keeps up, I might stop wearing a tie to these meetings.
All of those in favor?
Third thing I wanted to chat about, too, was I had, I met with citizens Sunday, in the middle of a rock in the Willamette River, on the Stern Wheeler Willamette Queen. It was a, it was quite enjoyable evening, and cruise, and the, being stuck on the rock and the adventure that concluded our trip was, that made, made the event all, all the more memorable. I did, the, the, the event as a whole gave me a perspective on some of the discussions we've had about bringing the Stern Wheeler Rose to Oregon City, and kind of reaffirmed and enhanced my interest in doing that, because on this trip, which is the first kind of Stern Wheeler trip that I had taken, both the, just the, you know, the, the beauty of the movement of the glide on the still river, and seeing, you know, nature and the river ecology from that perspective was, was fascinating to me. I had never seen Willamette Narrows, and going through Willamette Narrows just prior to getting stuck up on that rock was just awe-inspiring.
Can you?
Yeah, I, believe me, I will, I will, I will make that point of that now. And, you know, because we have the, the locks reopening up, and the comments that Commissioner Smith had really started my thinking on this about, you know, the best way to see the falls being right up there and about. And just the experience of our, and Commissioner Neely has talked about Oregon City's sense of place, and the degree to which our sense of place is created by the river, and these kind of natural features, and the way that is enhanced so much from the perspective of a riverboat cruise. I, I, I'm happy with that we're confronting, you know, trying to establish something that here. A lot of issues, of course, you know, the dock issue, the dredging issues, the rocks, you know, there's, there's some hazard with the locks and their operation. But it was, it was a really eye-opening and gratifying event, and I look forward to taking another cruise, maybe not having another dock or rock event like that, but, but it was, it was, it was very nice.
I think working towards the possible establishment of a national heritage area really will bring together many of the ways that we can access the river, particularly on it. That's why we need those locks open. Any other commissioner reports? I have a few things here. Since we met last, we've had two four-hour impact meetings, Metro Policy Advisory Committee to specifically make a, an impact recommendation on urban and rural reserves. Painfully, we actually came to an agreement that we would consider, this is a recommendation only, that we would consider, or recommend, recommend a 40-year time horizon to look at our land uses rather than 50, and that we check in in 20 years, and the state does permit that to, to happen. We laboriously went through each of the, as yet unresolved by the Core Four parcels of land, and the only outstanding one that, in Oregon City, was that area up off of Forsyth Road. And as we requested, it was recommended to be designated, undesignated by impact. The area with the least agreement around the table was around Cornelius. The, the community of, city of Cornelius wishes to have, it, they're, they're about 1,200 acres and wanted to add about 700 acres. So there was a lot of argument about how much acreage, should a city really be able to essentially half their size yet again? And that may be an issue, the Cornelius issues may be one that hangs up the Core Four. So rather than stop the process and go back to the old way of determining urban growth expansion, which was by soil types, there was maybe a recommendation to carve out that little piece and say, let's just put that over here and resolve it over here, whether it goes to court or however it needs to be resolved, while the rest of the region agrees on the urban and rural reserves process. So we will recommend that to Metro Council, and we'll get their report next Wednesday. Then the boundary edges will kind of be firmed up. There is a lot of, many, many meetings going on, and Clarkmas County's representative is Charlotte Leahan, Commissioner Charlotte Leahan, to that process, and she, she takes it very seriously. So the, the discussion was robust, but I think we might be close to there. If we aren't, it's about 300 acres apart, I think that's what people keep saying. So there's agreement on about 90% of the region, region. Next, on Saturday afternoon, I went, I planted a tree with the neighbors and interested parties in The Wedge, which is a piece of public property at Ninth and Division, where the, the city has given permission to create an edible landscape. And the, there, there are fruit trees, pear, apple, kiwi, grapevines along it, and then a wonderful sign that, that advertises this. The, the committee, which is called Food Harvest 2010, I believe, wishes to use other properties in Oregon City that neighbors can access and also help to protect. I just wanted to share the story of why the apple tree that we, that, that I planted along with this, with the citizens. It is said that one of the pioneers in the community was Reverend Alvin Waller, who was the pastor of the Methodist Church down on the lower level of Oregon City, and that one day his daughter was eating an apple, she threw the core out the window, and it grew into Oregon City's first apple tree. So they decided that they were replicating kind of that, that memorable moment. So if it's not true, it's certainly very good legend. But anyway, I want to introduce you to The Wedge, and I believe that there is a, an article about that in today's Oregon City News. The Oregon City Art Committee has met, and I think will be presenting some guidelines for the art that hangs in our, in our city hall and the new gallery in the community. It will be changed four times a year, and the call for artists will be going out, so that we will ask for the city staff to select two members that will select the art and artists for, for next year, for the four rotations through, through the year. Since the city staff has to look at it most of the time, they, along with other members of the art community, and will make that, that selection. As far as we have gotten, it's very, very positive comments about this rotational art, and we have some guidelines now that it is to reflect the spirit of Oregon City. So the, the art and the artists have to have, they're supposed to be local artists as defined by, kind of in this area, and their intent is to focus an eye on some aspect of Oregon City. So with that, if there are no further reports, we are adjourned. Into a continuation of executive session, press tune to ORAS 1922660, what's the new one?
2H.
2H, thank you.